Meeting to order tonight for the Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Meeting for Monday, June 18th. It's just a minute or two, we're gonna have the opening ceremony with the presentation of colors, and I'd like to tell you who these cadets are. The opening ceremony tonight will be conducted by a combined unit of the Air Force Junior ROTC Cadets as follows. Cadet Captain Chris Finley from Northwest Cabarrus High School, Cadet Captain Ashley Haas from Central Cabarrus High School, Cadet Captain Alisa Shepherd from Mount Pleasant High School, Cadet Captain Kouschel Patel from J Robinson High School, and tonight the cadets are being led by Lieutenant Colonel Nelson English, United States Air Force Retired, and Lieutenant Colonel Scott Rose from United States Air Force Retired, and Master Sergeant Carlos Delacruz, U.S. Air Force Retired. Will you all stand for the presentation of colors?
Good.
I just learned this evening that these cadets that was here this evening, and maybe a couple of others, will be going to a week's camp at the Citadel. They're gonna be leaving in the morning at 2:00 a.m. And they just do such a wonderful job for the presentations, and if you were at the graduations last week, you would've seen that we had representation there every night for the graduation, and so it was a great experience. Wanted to mention now, I told you that I thought we'd have an officer tonight from the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department, and we do, he's in the back, back there, and we have Officer Dean Vernon, and he's the SRO at Northwest Cabarrus High School. Good to have you with us tonight, thanks for being here. Okay, Board members, we're gonna move forward now to setting the agenda. We've had the agenda since last week, and of course, we need to carry over from the work session, so do I have a motion that we accept the agenda as presented?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, the agenda's adopted. Okay, now we'll move forward with the recognition portion of our meeting tonight. Our first recognition will be the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month Award. I'd like to ask Dr. Colleen Sane, Mrs. Kathy Auger, and Mr. Tim Vaughn to the podium here to make this presentation.
Mr. Chairman and Board Members, because of the generosity of Hillbush Ford, nine outstanding Cabarrus County Schools teachers have been recognized this year. Tonight, we honor our 10th and final outstanding teacher for the 2011-2012 school year. Mr. Vaughn, we thank you and our friends at Hillbush Ford for sponsoring this award for our deserving teachers, and we are grateful for this partnership. Tonight, I'm pleased to announce that the Cabarrus County Schools' Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for June is Scott Mills. Mr. Mills, would you and your family, or any members of your school's administrative team, please come forward?
Thank you.[464.00][464.00](Laughter).
Scott Mills is the band director at Harold E. Winkler Middle School. He received multiple nominations for this award from a student and several band parents. In one of the nominations, a parent wrote, "Mr. Mills brings a lot of great qualities to his task of teaching and training the young musicians he's entrusted with, but if I had to pick just one that embodies him, it would be his passion. Mr. Mills shares his love of music while teaching students to be better musicians and citizens." Another parent wrote, "His official job title is band director, but Mr. Mills teaches students more than music. He took students to perform at our elementary schools, to perform in competitions, and also to wing it for a performance. He also took the band on a trip to Washington, D.C., where they performed at the World War II Memorial. And he even worked with the band director at J.M. Robinson High School to arrange an evening during football season for the band members to spend the evening with the Robinson High School band during a football game." Mr. Mills is a great role model, and spends lots of time outside of school promoting the band program, and making sure that students are positive role models. His dedication to his job, his students, his family, and his country are commendable. We are blessed to have such a dedicated individual teaching our children in Cabarrus County Schools. Mr. Mills, on behalf of Cabarrus County Schools, we want to thank you for all that you do to mold your students into better musicians, and into caring, responsible, and productive citizens. And now, Mr. Vaughn and Dr. Sane will present you with your award.[592.16][592.16](Laughter). And we'd like to invite you to shake the hands of our Board members, thank you.[597.16][597.16](Applause).
I heard that about that key to that Mustang in the back of your truck out there.
opportunities for Hispanic students in the areas of math, science, engineering, and technology.
That'd be a good thing to consider for next year, Mr. Vaughn.[612.16][612.16](Laughter).
Students in middle and high school are offered the opportunity to attend sessions on the
Okay, let's move right along to the 4.02 here, the Metta State Pre-College Science Competition
university campus one Saturday a month during the school year and one week in the summer.
Award, with Mr. Ben Alredt, if he's there, he is, can come to the podium, thank you.
The middle school program prepares students to move into a pre-college program as they
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, we would like to invite Juan Manharris and Mark Trigueros
enter high school. Ms. Hutchins, a teacher in our school system, has worked with the university and the Metta
to come forward with their families. Ms. Jackie Hartley, Assistant Principal at Central Cabarrus, is here as well, and would
program since the beginning, approximately four years ago.
also like to invite Ms. Mindy Hutchins to come forward.
We want to thank her for her dedication and commitment to the students and their growth. This program started with four students. This year, 98 applications were received and processed for the summer camp, started today at UNC Charlotte. Tonight, we would like to honor two students for their outstanding accomplishments in the Metta program. Juan Manharris and Mark Trigueros were two of the first students to join our Metta program in 2008. For the past two years, Juan and Mark have won the regional competition in the Rocketry Division to qualify for the state competitions. In 2011, they finished second in the state, and this year, they finished first. They competed against other regional qualifiers from eight other pre-college programs held on university campuses across the state. Both young men are rising seniors at Central Cabarrus High School and play soccer there. Juan will be taking honors chemistry, honors English IV in the fall, and Mark is in the ROTC and will be taking AP European History and AP Literature. We congratulate both of these young men, their families, and Ms. Hutchins for their efforts.[701.23][701.23](Applause). Thank you.
Okay, our next award will be presented by Ms. Ronnie Boone, and Ms. Boone, if you'll come to the podium, this is the State Soil and Water Conservation Competition Champion Computer-Generated Slideshow, so I think you'll find this interesting. I've already seen it myself, it's very interesting. Ms. Boone?
Good evening, Board Members. I would like to invite Hannah Watson to come forward, along with her teacher, Ms. Jody Hott, and with Mr. Dennis Testament from the Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District. Hannah has just completed 6th grade at Harris Road Middle School, and she is the state winner for the Computer-Generated Slideshow category for the Soil and Water Conservation District's annual contest, which is sponsored by the North Carolina Association of Soil and Water Conservation Districts. This is the first year for this Computer-Generated Slideshow category, and this year's theme was Wetlands Are Wonderful. Hannah's slideshow answers the question, "Why in the world would we need to preserve wetlands?", and then proceeds to explain why we should preserve the wetlands and how we can protect them. Hannah began her journey to the state title by competing in the district event, which is sponsored by the Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District under Mr. Testament's area, and she advanced to the regional competition in March, and then on to the state competition in May, which was held in Raleigh. Hannah, on behalf of all of us in Cabarrus County Schools, we say congratulations, and thank you for doing your part to educate others about this important environmental issue. Congratulations.[853.08][853.08](Applause).
So whenever you get a chance to view this meeting, be sure to look at that video, and I think you'll find it very interesting. I learned quite a bit myself, to be honest with you. Okay, let's move on to 4.4, this is the Gatorade North Carolina High School Baseball Player of the Year, and Ms. Donna Smith, ready to go?
And I am pleased to present this. Unfortunately, tonight Cory Seeger is unable to join us, but I have many things to share with you. ESPN and Gatorade have chosen Northwest Cabarrus High Schools Cory Seeger as the 2011-12 North Carolina Baseball Player of the Year. This award recognizes outstanding athletics excellence, but also the highest of standards in academic achievement and exemplary character on and off the field. On the field, Cory has led the Trojans with a 5.19 batting average, 10 home runs, and 37 RBIs. That's pretty impressive. He was selected to the Perfect Game Louisville Slugger and Collegiate Baseball All-American Teams, and Cory has also earned all tournament honors for Team USA in the Pan American Games. But off the field, Cory also maintains a 4.05 GPA in the classroom. He's a member of numerous clubs at Northwest, including FCA, FFA, Beta Club, and the Awesome Club. He also donates his time as a volunteer youth baseball instructor, and also serves as a motivational speaker for the Muscular Dystrophy Association. Cory has signed a national intent letter to play baseball at the University of South Carolina, and also, the latest of news is the Los Angeles Dodgers have picked him as 18th overall pick in the first round of the Major League Draft. Cory has accomplished much in a very short period of time, and we take this honor to salute him and also recognize his achievements both on and off the field. We're very proud of Cory, and so we congratulate him now.[995.11][995.11](Applause).
Thank you very much for that award there, Donna. All right, we'll move on now to 4.5, the Energy Star Award. Mr. Wickie's not here, so we have Mr. Cliff Moyer, if he'll come to the podium, and make this Energy Star Award.
The representatives from Cox Mill High School, please come forward.
Thank you. The Energy Star is a government-backed program that helps businesses and individuals protect the environment through superior energy efficiency. The Energy Star Award is presented to the staff of a building that has reduced their energy consumption while maintaining certain levels of comfort in the building. So from the Energy Star webpage, I'll read the following paragraphs. "Schools, the nation's 17,000 K-12 schools in the district spend more than $6 billion on energy. This is more than combining the costs for computers and textbooks together. Unfortunately, as much as 30% of that energy is used inefficiently." So the Energy Star, in order to promote this savings of energy, the U.S. government, through the Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA, has provided a quick and easy way to benchmark the energy performance of an individual building. A building whose performance is among the nation's top 25% that maintains a healthy indoor environment can qualify for the Energy Star Award, and Cox Mill High School has met these goals. In addition to meeting these goals, the last 10 months, if you compared the electrical usage at Cox Mill High to the previous year, they have reduced their electrical usage by over 152,000 kilowatt-hours, and through my calculations, I've estimated that at the end of the year, in their efficiency rating, they will be at 50,000 BTUs per square foot, which means that they are the most efficient high school in the district. Thus, I am proud to present this award to Mr. Todd Smith, Principal, Mr. Mark Lowery, Assistant Principal, and Mr. Jesus Costello, Head Custodian. Thank you.[1165.83][1165.83](Applause).
Now we'll move on to 5.0, the approval of the minutes. Board members, we've had, you've had these for a week or better, the minutes from May 7th, work session, May 10th, joint meeting with the Board of Commissioners, the May 14th, business meeting. Do I have a motion that we approve the minutes as presented?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 6-0, minutes approved. Okay, now we'll move on to the report section and Board Chair Comments section. The only thing that I want to say tonight is just how proud I am of the way the graduations went last week. We did eight graduations in three days, and the administration, the staff members, I'm telling you, everybody that was involved, it just went so great. And I tell you, I appreciate all your efforts, and Board members, for all of you that attended very faithfully, some attended all, and some attended most all, but all in all, though, it went well. I think we only had just a minor incident or two, and I hope that our seniors are having a good time and getting ready for the real world, which is, you know, already going for them. And I couldn't help but think, when I was sitting there at the arena, looking out, because it's been 40 years since I graduated from Central Cabarrus High School, my 40th anniversary, and I was just thinking about where I was 40 years ago, didn't have a clue about anything. And I suppose there was a lot of those kids just like me back then, but you just don't never know where you're gonna end up. But I'm very thankful, though, for everybody that did all they did, because it was tiring, very taxing on everybody, but I'm glad it went well. Now, the Superintendent, Dr. Sane, you have any comments you want to pass to the audience?
I do. Dr. Shepherd asked, left me with a few comments that I'd like to share with you. As a general reminder for the public, we've begun our summer hours last week. All Cabarrus County Schools and buildings will operate on a four-day work schedule, and we will be open Monday through Thursday from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in this building. The one exception is the week of July 4th, when our buildings will be open eight hours each day, and close for July 4th for Independence Day. Please check the information posted on our district website for information about each school's enrollment hours. And now, Mr. Schu, I know why you are so tired. We graduated 1,954 young people from our district, so congratulations to those and their families on all the accomplishments of these young people. I'd like to also extend my thanks to the many school and district staff members who worked tirelessly to ensure that each graduation went smoothly, and that our guests had a pleasant experience. And even as we close that one year, we think towards the next year. So as we look forward, you'll be able to find information about open house and school opening and dismissal times available on our district website. That concludes our comments, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sane, and I have to admit, you know, it did go smooth, the way everything went, and in talking to these students, I noticed Dr. Sane was beside me about the whole time, matter of fact, every one of these, and she really wanted to know where these kids were going, to school, what their efforts were gonna be directed toward when they left there, and so many was going to various community colleges. I think we had one going to Harvard, USC, Tennessee, Virginia Military Academy, Naval Academy. These kids were going everywhere, they're scattering. So it makes me real proud, you know, to have been able to take part of that. So anyway, the next thing we're gonna move on to is 7.0, and I believe we have a guest speaker on schedule for tonight, and I'd like to ask and see if Albert and Tara Wiggins, if you're here, it's time for, come up to the podium, and you can speak to us, I think you have some concerns with playground and safety, and possibly some solutions and different things that you might want to talk to us about. Just want to remind you that you'll know that there's a little timer on the podium there, and it's got three minutes on it, and that's how many minutes you have, and when you get down to about 20 seconds, you'll see a yellow light come on, and when it gets red, you know it's time for you to stop, okay? Thank you for being here.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening. First, we'd like to thank Dr. Sane and all of the Board Members for giving us this opportunity to come out and voice our concerns. On April 19, 2012, our daughter was injured on the playground at Cox Mills Elementary School. We are here as concerned parents, not only for our daughters, but for all the students in Cabarrus County Schools. Playground safety and bullying is a concern nationwide for many parents. It is time for a plan of action, put in school safety first, eliminate the tolerance for bullying, review policies and procedures in order to make the necessary amendments. Aggressive behavior can no longer take a backseat, and every offense should be addressed immediately. We would like to make the following recommendation. Playground safety training for faculty and students to be reviewed at least three times during the school year. Address aggressive behavior on the playground immediately by calling parents. Faculty should be strategically placed between playground equipment that have a high incidence of injuries. Eliminate faculty from sitting down during recess. And minimize the amount of grade levels outside on the playground at any given time. Thank you for your time.
You're very welcome. Thank you both for being here, and we'll take those comments on advisement. Dr. Sane, I see you're making some good notes here, and so we'll be addressing those concerns as they see fit. Thank you for being here. You're very, very welcome. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I believe we have one more. Do we have Ms. Beth Purcell? Is it Purcell?
Yes.
Okay, and she wants to talk to us about the public virtual school option for North Carolina children.
Thank you.
And you remember what I told the other couple there?
Yes.
Three minutes, and your timer's gonna start when Ms. Monroe sets it, and when you start, we're ready to go.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Schu, Board Members, for a moment of your time this evening. I am here. I want to commend this board for your bold leadership and your progressive pursuit for innovative public school choices for the children of North Carolina. My name is Beth Purcell, and I drove here tonight from Greenville, South Carolina, to speak on behalf of the children of North Carolina. I am a very proud mom and learning coach to two South Carolina Virtual Charter School students, and I have witnessed firsthand the undeniable power of this educational option. My son is a gifted and talented learner, an advanced learner, and he is constantly in search of a challenge. He learns at an accelerated pace and is always eager to reach the next level. My daughter was born with a brain disorder called Agenesis of the Corpus Callosum, and she is missing the bundle of 200 million nerves that connect the two hemispheres of the brain. This creates difficulty in processing information, and she benefits from one-on-one instruction and creative teaching techniques. We are talking about an intelligent young lady interested in learning and achieving, but just unable to succeed in the traditional educational environment. Virtual education helps both of my children succeed. While our local, traditional brick-and-mortar district school was excellent, and our teachers were very caring and dedicated educators, this school just simply was unable to meet my children's needs. We just completed our fourth year of virtual school. My daughter is a happy, independent, confident, rising freshman, thriving at grade level and retaining so much more than I ever dared imagine. Virtual education has put a high school diploma within her reach, and has made a college degree a reality and a goal for her. And my son, well, he doesn't have to search so hard for those challenges any longer. Through hard work at an accelerated pace and consistently high test scores, he has advanced to grade levels, and is currently a 12-year-old, rising freshman, enrolled in sophomore-level English and math classes. Virtual education has created an energized, independent, inquisitive learner focused on the endless possibilities for his future. I know that change is difficult, and opposition is usually born out of fear and misunderstanding. Virtual education is here to stay. Currently, 30 states across our nation offer a public virtual education option for their families. The demand for virtual education is on the rise nationwide. This board recognizes that North Carolina's children deserve a menu of public educational options that will allow them to find the very best fit for their educational learning needs. North Carolina Virtual Academy is waiting for you to tell their 1,500 children that enrollment for the 2012-2013 school year is available. Thank you for your time this evening.
You're very welcome. Thank you, Mrs. Purcell. You had that right down on the minute, didn't you? Okay, ladies and gentlemen... Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to move on now, Board members, to number 8.0, the approval of the consent agenda. These are the items that we worked on, on our work session, and do I have a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Agenda items on the consent agenda have been approved. Now we'll move to 9.0, the action agenda, where we'll have Jason Van Heukelum at the podium there to give us the rundown on the four-day school week at the Performance Learning Center.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You guys were able to review the proposal last time we met. We did tweak that based on the recommendations of the board to include the teachers rotating in and out of those Fridays that Mr. Blackburn was going to be there by himself. So we've sent that schedule to you. It's here. Basically, half the teachers will report on some of the days and the other half will report on the other days. So if you have any questions about that.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Board members, we'll start on Mr. Fur's side. Remember, we discussed this last week, or two weeks ago, and so if you have any questions, we'll start on your side. No comments? Ms. Blackwelder?
No questions, just a general comment. I'm glad that you say they did the staff change there. That was important to me. I was a little bit worried and concerned, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Ms. Blackwelder. Mr. Cogger, do you have comments?
No, well done. I think, I'm eager to hear back how it progresses, so I think it'll, I think it'll go well.
Thank you, Mr. Cogger. Ms. Carpenter?
I'm over here beating the mouse to try to turn on my mic. Been a long day. No, I think that's great, and again, we'll get a report back. I'd kind of like to get one back the first year, just to see how we're going with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. And Ms. Minnet, do you have comments, questions?
The only comment I have is I think this issue here with being able to go to the four days because it seems to be the best thing for our children in that particular situation, plus the speaker who just spoke to us, are things that I like to see where we have options and we make those decisions here in Cabarrus County.
Thank you, Ms. Minnet. Okay, Board members, this is an action item, so do I have a motion that this four-day school week at the Performance Learning Center be approved as presented?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Motion.
Second, Mr. Fur, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Ms. Monroe, motion carries 6-0. Thank you, Mr. Van Heukelum. Okay, now we need to have Mr. Chris Lauter to the podium. We're going to talk about the graduation dates for the 2013 year. Ms. Lauter, you're there, so we're good to go.
As some of you have said, we had great graduation ceremonies this past week. The one piece of feedback that we got quite a bit of, starting back in about Christmas time, was that because of our schedule, we had graduations on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, which we haven't had for quite a while, if ever, since we've been at the arena. And we did get quite a lot of feedback, and I'm sure some of you guys got some feedback through email that that was not the most desirable time. What we had people saying was that because of work obligations in the middle of the week and also because of relatives traveling in, that they much preferred a weekend schedule instead of the first of the week on a Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. So knowing that, the managers at the arena always give us first choice, obviously, because it's a Cabarrus County arena. This past year, or this past last, not this past weekend, but the one before, Union County did do theirs on the weekend and are requesting to be able to do it again there, and the managers at arena just asked if we would like to try to schedule that for the weekend or schedule it for Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, because currently, next year's graduation schedule is the exact same as this one. It would be a Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. So we talked to the principals, I talked to the first four principals that would have to pull that off, and if we did that, we would have one graduation ceremony at 4:00 on Friday, which actually is the last day of school. So we would have school on Friday and then have a graduation, which would be the PLC at 4:00, since they have a small number of students. And Central Cabarrus would go at 7:30 on Friday night. Then we would have four graduation ceremonies on Saturday and two on Sunday, one beginning at 4:00 and one at 7:30. So the reason that we brought this up quickly is, one, we just finished graduation, and as I said, Union County is already asking for that, so it's something that we have to make a decision on fairly quickly, because Union County wants to rent the arena. Whichever time we choose, they're going to choose the other.
Thank you, Dr. Lauter. I think that it's Cabarrus County's arena and we ought to have first choice, and so anyway, I like to give the board the opportunity to question, and Ms. Minnet, do you have any questions concerned about this? You okay? Ms. Carpenter?
You know, we've had this discussion a lot of times. We had some of the people come back and say, "Oh, we don't want to do it on Sundays because of church." Well, doing it late in the evening, you know, most time people go to services, they will go in the morning instead of the afternoon. And I think I've gotten more complaints with us doing it this year during the week, because most people have trouble getting off work during the middle of the week. So I think, you know, we're going to hear things both ways, but I think people would prefer maybe doing it, you know, if they have to have people come in and travel, you know, still, they have it for the weekend. So I think we'd get less if we do it in the evenings on Sunday and do it that way.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Cogger, do you have comments?
Just a quick question. What happens to the annual leave days on the 13th and 14th? Does that, do they then become the 10th and 11th, or?
Dr. Sane's in charge of the calendar. I'm not, I don't think it would change our annual leave days. It would just be a schedule that would move depending on which school graduated and what time. So in other words, the school's...
So they'd stay as Thursday, Friday of the following week? And does it really matter? I mean, seriously?
It doesn't really matter.
Okay, next question. And I guess the only negative thing that I can think of off the top of my head is the PLC is usually attached to a dinner that, will they be able to do something at 5:00 or 5:30, either offsite or somewhere else, to be able to keep their tradition?
Right. I talked to Mr. Blackburn and the arena, and they really have two choices. They can have their dinner the Thursday night before and graduate Friday, or they can have graduation at 4:00 and then walk over to the goal room, just like we did this year, and eat while we're bringing people in for the central one, and Mr. Blackburn was good with either one of those.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cogger. Ms. Blackwelder?
Well, you've said that we've had questions and comments and maybe a few emails. I would call them chewing outs, to be more accurate, so I'm definitely in favor of it. And I've actually talked to a few people since we had the Sunday discussion, and they were much more in favor of, you know, Friday, Saturday, Sunday versus Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So thank you for doing that so quickly.
Mr. Fur? Okay, well, as far as I'm concerned, I know that, you know, you're going to have complaints. It doesn't matter what day you have it. You're going to have complaints, and I realize that, and everybody else does realize it, I believe, but the point is, is that we're trying to make better use not only of our time, but the parents' time as well, and, you know, it's hard for them, like Ms. Carpenter said, to get off, like, taking a whole day or two days or whatever, particularly if you've got children in different schools or whatever, and it's hard, it's hard to make it work. This way, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday would work. Don't particularly like the Sunday evening thing, but, you know, it's the better of the options that we have, and so I think it's very good. So Board members, this is another action item. Do I have a motion that we approve the graduation dates for 2013?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the calendar change with the stipulation that the two Sunday graduations are specifically at 4:00 and 7:00, and that the arena can't change the time or do it in the morning or whatever, but so that, I guess the motion would be that we amend the calendar to have two graduations on Friday the 7th, four on the 8th, and two on the 9th, starting no earlier than 4:00 p.m.
Let me clarify that with Dr. Sane. Dr. Sane, since you're doing the calendar, is that the way you want to handle this, or do you want to bring the calendar back to us for an amendment?
I thought we were going to be able to amend the calendar, but I was reminded this afternoon about retest being on the calendar, and next year we'll no longer be doing retest. So I'm good with that, but I'm still going to have to bring it back to you in July.
Well, with that being said, why don't we just approve it as it is, just for the dates, and then when you bring it back, then we can amend the calendar at that time?
Well, then I'm confused on what exactly we're approving.
No, we're just, we're trying to lock these dates in, Mr. Cogger. We're trying to lock these dates in with the event, because he has to know. He has to tell the management at the arena that we do or do not want the dates, and that's what the vote is tonight. The calendar had to be brought back to us for an amendment to reflect the changes that the board makes tonight. Does that not make sense? That's all we're doing. We can't make more out of it than that, you know?
Okay, I just don't understand why we have to, why do we have to do it twice? Why can't we do it once?
Because I have to, if you want to go ahead and add that we would remove retest days, and then I have to adjust senior exam days.
See, obviously, there's more to it than just changing these dates like this. The calendar will have to be brought back to us, and I knew that whenever we first talked about it. That's the whole reason that we're having this, is so that we can lock those dates in, because Union County's wanting to know something from the arena management, and we're wanting to tell them, yes, we want it. And if we don't want it, that's sports.
Well, then is there something flawed with my motion?
Yep.
That we adopt the dates of June 7th, 8th, and 9th for graduation, with the 9th being stipulated that graduation cannot start any earlier than 4:00 in the afternoon?
Yeah, that's no problem with that. The calendar part was the problem that we...
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Okay, Dr. Lauter, you're good to go with that. Now, and Dr. Sane, as you mentioned, she'll be coming back to the board again, I guess, on July the 2nd, which will be our only meeting for the month of July, be a joint work session, business meeting together, and she'll be bringing the calendar back, revised calendar that we'll have to approve at that time. Okay, Board members, we've made our record here, 40 minutes, and it's time for us now to convene into closed session, pursuant to General Statute 143.318.11a6, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee, and pursue it to General Statute 143.318.11a3, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged to discuss the pending judicial action. Do I have a motion? We convene in closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, that's it for this evening, and I'd like to say goodnight to all of you and to the viewing audience, and hope you're having a good start to a summer, and we'll see you back on July the 2nd. Good night.